Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome everybody to the Rhinebeck zoning Board of Appeals meeting for August 18th, 2021. Again, I want to welcome everybody. The first order of business here is to approve the minutes from the last meeting back in July. Did everybody have an opportunity to take a look at the meeting minutes? Any questions, concerns, corrections?
I had one correction.
Chris?
First, on page two, it might have already been caught by Kim or somebody, but it was seconded by Dave Byers. You know, it's probably not like me.
Okay.
Yes.
Third paragraph in the half on page two.
Got it.
Ah, well, it could have been seconded by me.
I was gonna say, I'll double check right now.
Okay.
Between that and Richard MacLauroso yesterday.
I know, these old members keep haunting us, so.
And what else?
Any other?
No, I think that would go with.
Okay. All right, with that one correction, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for the last meeting of July 21st, 2021. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, passed. And then, believe it or not, it is time to consider our meeting schedule for 2022. Did everybody have an opportunity to take a look at the proposed dates for next year? Yeah? All right, and I presume that we want it formally, okay. So, no questions, concerns, anything like that? All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed meeting minute dates for the year 2022. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. All right, again, thank you, folks, I apologize for the delay. The first matter that is up public, we have no new applications. The first matter is a public hearing, and it's on the Rugi case. Mr. Praminsky. By the way, is there anyone here for the Rugi matter? The Rugi fore sign matter? Okay. But you still got to do this.
Good evening, Mark Praminsky, representing Rugi's 19 properties, LLC. This applicant, this is a sign application in front of the ZBA for area variance, because the total signage on the property exceeds, excuse me, exceeds the allowable amount of signage allowed for this particular property. This application is just simply changing Rhinebeck Board to Rugi's Board. And so, in my presentation to the board last month, I outlined the change. It's actually a reduction in the total sign area. I think it's a reduction by six or seven square meters.
Maybe seven, yeah.
Just simply changing, you can see on the inside, the Rhinebeck Board. And then it's just now it's recentering the board logo. I know the board had a few questions last meeting with regard to materials. So vinyl, vinyl letters have provided that information to the board, and they'll give vinyl letters to the board. I know the planning board has also, a sign permit was considered by the planning board at their meeting last week. And I think Rhinebeck was opposed to it. That's the only change on the second.
It looks like we got hits for peros, and the planning board was kind enough to make a grant of a, something back from the conservation advisory board.
Yeah, the CAC said that there was no, no sign, and the planning board had no significant planning issues. And Dr. Scotty, the planning board stated that it was a matter of.
So we're good. Questions, concerns? I don't know, any questions, concerns? And so I will make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Nobody? All right.
Is anybody gonna do a site visit, or just?
I think we need to drive by. I don't think there's any need, it's pretty easy to see through the road, so unless somebody wants to. And Catherine, where do you want those signatures? So, under statute, we have 62 days to make a resolution. I am confident that we will have a resolution for you by the next meeting, which is?
September 15th.
September 16th?
September 15th.
September 15th, okay. All right.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay. And let me guess, everybody is here for the next application, which is the Red Wing application. Is that correct? All right. Just a couple of things before we begin.
We're probably gonna turn names.
Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry. Okay, so just note for the record that Tim Albrook is recusing himself from the matter. Okay. Unfortunately, we have one member who is on vacation, one member who is not here from the matter before, but I do not anticipate that we are gonna take any action of any note tonight. We are simply gonna hear from the applicant, and we're gonna hear from the public. All right, we're gonna, this is our first public hearing. I anticipate it's gonna take at least another public hearing, maybe another, I don't know, before we flesh this thing out. So I don't think it's gonna be a problem with us going forward. And I certainly don't want to waste everyone's time, because they were coming up to be here tonight. Just a couple of things. These, you know, the, we have a procedure here, because obviously, there's a lot of folks who are interested in this matter. We're very happy to see everybody here, because, you know, some Wednesday nights we're kind of lonely. And it's great to see that people are very interested in this application. And we know that people have very strong opinions, and that's great. But we, I, demand, I guess maybe demand is a little bit too strong a word, that everybody be civil here, and that everybody respect each other, and that people don't talk over each other. You know, we're Rhinebeck. We're not Washington, we're some other rocky place, all right? We're civil, and I expect that that's what's gonna happen here. In the past, that has happened here. I hope everybody has been able to see the guidelines that we put out tonight. They're up there, and we're gonna follow them, all right? And so there is gonna be kind of a procedure here. The applicant is gonna go first, and the applicant is gonna get up there and tell you what their position is. And then after that, we're gonna invite people up who want to speak, and I have a sign-in sheet. And if you do want to speak and you have not signed up, please come up and sign up. What we're gonna need you to do is to come up to the podium, okay? And we're gonna need you to state your name, state your address, keep your voice up, enunciate, so Jordan can hear you, okay? We're being filmed here, and we need to make a record. If there's an issue, we'll let you know. Just, you know, some people are soft in their voice, and we'll ask you to try to keep it up. When you're up there, please address us. We, you know, whatever questions, concerns, opinions, whatever you have, we want to hear them, okay? So we're gonna give you time. Please use your time and direct it towards us. Don't direct it towards the applicant, or direct it towards other people, or whatever. Just direct it to us. We want us to be civil, okay? And if you do have some written materials you want to submit, you know, either the speech that you're gonna give, or what have you, please give it to Chris. We're gonna make a record, we're taking in all this information. We did receive a lot of information in the last?
Two hours.
Two hours. I was gonna be kind and say 24. But just a lot of information from a lot of different people, and we haven't had a chance to sort through it. So we are definitely gonna keep this meeting open. But we want to get started, all right? So, anyway, I just hope that everybody acts civilly, I'm sure you will.
I just have a quick question. Is all the material that we had sent through, the written material, considered part of our record?
It should be at this point, yeah. All the stuff. But if you have additional things, sometimes people have additional things. But yeah, that's, what Catherine said is true. If you've already submitted written information as part of the record, anything that we received from the public, it will be part of the public record. So, let's get going. And by the way, we're gonna start with the masks on when you're up there, but if Jordan can't hear you, I guess we'll modify that a bit. We'll try to keep them on if we can.
Good evening, board members of the ZDO, as well as the town resident of Rhinebeck. My name is Ryan Collier, I'm attorney at bond, shenanquin king. I represent Red Wing Properties, Inc. I was here last month as well, giving a very similar presentation. So on April 27th, 2021, Red Wing was served with a notice of violations and season desist for alleged violations of the town of Rhinebeck zoning code. Ultimately, the town believes that Red Wing needs a supplemental use permit and site plan approval to build a mine access road to its property. Red Wing obviously disagrees with this, which I'll get into, but Red Wing does not believe we need a site plan approval or a supplemental use permit simply to build this mine access road. Now, just a little brief background about Red Wing, and most of you know this already, but Red Wing is a sand and gravel mine that has 241 acres in the town of Rhinebeck. And this is right off of White Schoolhouse Road. Now, the majority of this land, and this is important, is not mineable. It is only about 94 acres that we're here for today. The rest of the acreage is either wetlands that we can't mine on, or we have not submitted an application to DEC, and we reduced it down to the 94 acres. Now, to break down the 94 acres, you have 37 and a half acres that are already permitted and have been mined on in the past. But nothing, importantly, nothing has been done since 2013. There's been absolutely zero mining on this property, including the 37 and a half acres, since 2013. The other 56 and a half acres have not been mined on, and were part of the previous litigation that went on for many, many years before the ZDO, the ZBA, the Dutchess County Supreme Court, up to the appellate division, and even the Board of Appeals put their two cents in. And we'll get into that as well. As recognized by the Board of Appeals, which as most of you know is the highest court in this state, mining is a very unique operation. It's unlike many other land uses, in that when you mine, you're only mining a very small portion of the land. And once that portion has been mined, you then move on to the next portion, and then the next, and the next, and so forth. So for this case, the 94 acres that we're here for today, they will not be all mined at the same time. There's not gonna be 94 acres of mining going on. It's actually only gonna be about two or three acres at a time. And I think that's important based on some of the public comments that I've read today, yesterday, and throughout this week, as well as the public comments from the prior litigation, that had a lot to do with the vast scale of this, which it's really not, it's very small, and the amount of trucks that may or may not be in and out of that place. So we're talking really two to three acres of that 94. We're also only talking about 20, maybe 25 trucks. And of those 25 trucks, if we were able to use tractor trailers, although bigger, it would reduce that amount significantly, which would also reduce the traffic.
When you say 20 or 25 trucks, is that daily?
Yes, per day, yeah. But again, if we were able to use bigger trucks, then that would be much less. And despite what the town may believe, and I've already addressed this, but I would like to repeat it again, no mining has occurred since 2013. And Kim, if you don't mind pulling up some of the photos, we were actually on-site last week, me, Mr. Pransky, my client, and a number of members of the town. And they were there, they were physically there, they were able to see that the town, that no mining has occurred yet. And can you pull out so I can see the individual ones?
Sure.
Yeah, so these three are. So as you can see, and let me step back for everybody. This is what the mine looks like. This was last week. This was the existing life of mine. As you can see, it's obviously been overgrown. Nothing's been taken out of it. Do you want to move to the next picture or two? This is from a different angle, looking at the opposite direction. And Kim, if you want to start with the last one. And that's looking back up the opposite side of the mine. So as you can see, there's been absolutely no mining that's occurred. And as I repeated myself numerous times, no mining has occurred since 2013. The mining that did occur in 2013 and prior to that was a pretty small scale. It was permitted to the DEC, as well as special use permit. But then in 2006, after a number of the materials have been removed, it was now time, like in mining, like the Board of Appeals has recognized, to expand the mine and move on to different parts of the mine. And at that point, Red Wing had applied for a modification to its permit to increase that. And as part of that modification, a draft environmental impact statement was included, which importantly addressed many of the people's concerns in this town, and I'm sure the Towning Plan Board and the ZBA. And that was a very comprehensive plan that included a number of testing and studies. And the turtles, I know is a big thing, I'm sure a lot of public here understands the turtles. That draft environmental impact statement, which had been updated numerous times since that point, had been updated with the studies on these turtles, and we can get into the turtles in a minute. In 2009, the town then adopted a new comprehensive plan that established a mining overlay district. As part of this mining overlay district, essentially said where you could mine and where you couldn't mine. And Red Wing's property, the entire 241 acres, or even the 94 acres, the entire 241 acres was encompassed in that mining overlay district. So then in 2013, Red Wing applied for a supplemental use expansion. And in response, the town passed the local law number 4 of 2015, which essentially was the crux of the litigation that went on for numerous years, and just ended last year. And essentially, amongst other things, what the local law number 4 did was modify the mining overlay district to only encompass those areas that have already been mined or being mined. So with respect to Red Wing and its effect on Red Wing, it limited that 241 acres to only 37 and a half acres, which, number one, it already had the ability to mine there, and number two, it was coming to an end, and they needed to expand on their mine, which, as I've indicated before, is common in the mining industry. So, again, after years of litigation, we were before the ZDO, we were before the ZBA, we were before the Dutchess County Supreme Court. And yes, Red Wing lost at every step of that process. However, importantly, at the last stage of that process, in front of the appellate division on March 9th, 2020, we orally argued this case down in Brooklyn. And ultimately, a few months later, the court determined that Red Wing does have a vested right to mine its entire 94 acres. And as part of that application, and a major part of the litigation, the underlying litigation, was this mine access road. In fact, the town even argued, one of their arguments in the underlying action, was that Red Wing doesn't have a vested right to mine, because they don't have a road out of there, and because they don't have a right, a road out of there, they're not prepared to mine. They didn't show that they're going to mine, they didn't show their interest in mining in the future, and therefore, they can't mine, they don't have this vested right. So that road was a specific part of that litigation. And the court has, through the numerous voluminous records that we submitted, the court saw the road, and Kim, if you don't mind going back to that first map, as part of that appeal, and they ultimately determined this is the mine access road. And that was always in play, this document actually was taken from the record on appeal that was not only in Dutchess County Supreme Court, but also in the appellate division. And the court knew that this was our mine access road. They knew that this litigation was being based not only for the 56 and a half acres, but also for that mine access road. And ultimately, they decided for Red Wing. And if anybody's interested in looking at that decision, it's 184, 83rd, 577. So, the town then applied to the Court of Appeals, for the Court of Appeals to then review this decision. And the Court of Appeals denied that application. So what does that mean? That means that that case, that decision, the appellate division's decision, that Red Wing has a vested right to mine, is the decision. End of story. There's no change in that. Red Wing has that vested right. So why are we here today? Well, we're here today because, given those holdings, Red Wing moved forward with their modification of their DEC permit in order to build that road. And the DEC issued a modified permit allowing Red Wing to build that exact road, just as you see right here in red. And Red Wing also received a separate incidental take permit because of the turtles that I mentioned earlier, with respect specifically to this road. So what is an incidental take permit? It doesn't mean Red Wing can go around killing turtles. That's not what it means. I've heard that in the past. There's some people that have even written into that. That's not what that means. What that means is, they can build this road. And as part of building that road, it doesn't mean that turtles are running around, and these trucks are driving in there, and they're gonna crush them. There's actually, and we have photographs, Kim, if you don't mind pulling up an array of photos. There's actually photographs that will show you, where Red Wing has put in acres and acres and acres of this turtle fences that will prevent any turtles from crossing the road. And all of their wetlands, and that's why I said 241 minus 94, are all protected. This is actually the wildlife pass, so for deer, or coyote, bear, what have you, they can cross through the fence. If you don't mind just backing out, and I have to go clean. So let me back up here, but this, all of this is turtle fence. And this is just one photo of one minor section of the mine. This turtle fence goes the entire property, protecting that road. And my client spent $45,000 this spring to put this fence in. And they're also required to be checking this fence once mining continues, once there's trucks going in and out, that fence is gonna be, it's going to be looked at regularly. In fact, Red Wing has some people here who are certified in turtles, believe it or not. They're certified in turtles. They know which ones to look for, they know which ones are protected, they know what to do with them if they are in that property. But I assure you, I've been to that site a week ago, so there's people in the town. That fence is well gone, and it's throughout the entire property. And like I said, it goes acres and acres and acres. There's also two turtle tunnels, and I think we actually have photos of these as well. So there's two turtle tunnels that go underneath the mine access road. And how did we come up with two? Well, the DEC, who has looked through all of this, for hours and hours, and hundreds of documents, and study after study after study on these turtles, they're the ones that decided there need to be two underpasses. And these underpasses are spread throughout the roads. And why are they located where they are? Well, the DEC told us to put them there. And number two, there's wetlands on each side of this road, and this allows the turtles to go from one side of the road to the other. Now, given the court decisions and the DEC permit, to get back to why we are here today, Red Wing actually decided to move ahead with doing the road, which they had a vested right to mine to do so, which I indicated earlier. They also had a DEC permit allowing them to do so. And rather than just doing this and trying to hide it and cover it up, they actually, my client contacted town of Rhinebeck's town superintendent, the highway superintendent, to give him a heads up, to say, hey, we're gonna go ahead and implement our vested right, and we're gonna build this road. This was not something that's a secret. I think there's a misconception out there that Red Wing was trying to do this behind people's back. That's incorrect. We called the town highway superintendent as a courtesy to inform him that we'd be constructing this road. And within hours, I believe, Frank, the town highway superintendent was there.
Next day.
What's that?
The next day.
Next day? Sorry, next day, and they were there looking at it. And at this point, only a few trees have been taken down, literally, a few trees. And nothing else occurred after that. In fact, we got, on April 27th, 2021, like I said, there was the notice of violation. The notice of violation, like I've already indicated, essentially has to do with the building of this road. But at that point, when that violation was submitted and served by my client, there's only trees that were taken down. There was no building of the road, there was no, any of that, no dirt, there was no stone, no, none of this stuff had even occurred. So at the time, it's our submission that that was, that violation was not only incorrect and illegal, but also premature and not ripe. Now, I've read a number of the comments already, and as Mr. Bergen indicated, many came in as I was driving down here. So I haven't been able to repeat them all, I'm sure we're gonna hear them today. But a number of the comments that were coming in had to do with Red Wing forging forward and building the road. And Kim, if you could pull out, we could take a look at some of the photos of the road. Well, essentially, what actually happened was, we got the notice of violation. My client contacted me, we reviewed it, we opposed it, for some of the reasons I just indicated today. And then we went ahead and filed a notice of stay. And under the town of Rhinebeck code, a notice, excuse me, a notice of appeal, a notice of appeal stays not only the violations, but the season desist. So despite some of the comments, Red Wing did not turn their back on the town of Rhinebeck law. They did not ignore the law, they did not violate the law and forge forward, and it was actually stayed. The season desist was stayed, it was not in place at that time.
Can I ask you just a quick question?
Yes.
In the time of the notice of violation, it looks like it's, and I'm getting this from some of the comments and all this kind of stuff.
Sure.
The notice of violation was April 27th?
Correct.
The appeal was 6/14. Is that, is that right?
I'm gonna take your word for it.
I mean, that's the best I can determine.
Right.
So that's 48 days.
Okay.
And I think the concern, just judging from what I see from the public comments and all that kind of stuff, whatever it is between, is that there was a concern that there was a lot of work done during that timeframe, that 48-day timeframe. Now, you know, assuming you're correct on the law that, once you take an appeal, there's a stay, I don't know if it's just a stay, the monetary thing, or whatever, that's truly the spirit of the law, but we'll leave that aside. The stay wouldn't have come into place until June 14th. So what, my question is, what if any work was done in that 48 days?
Sure, and I think where the discrepancy here is, is the difference between the notice of appeal, which the law says stays it, and the actual filing of our opposition. I think a filing was in June.
Okay.
And the notice of appeal came before that. I can assure you, my client did absolutely nothing from March of when we contacted the superintendent until after we filed the notice of appeal or stay on this. So what did they do? Well, they, as you see, we're not hiding this. The town was there last week. They cleared some trees, and they put down some of the stone, they built the turtle protections, is what they were doing. They were building all of this fence, which took a while, and tens of thousands of dollars. They put in the two tunnels, and they put down stone. And that's it. There's no pavement, it's not permanent, it's not attached to the road, it's not attached to White Schoolhouse Road. It's not being used, there's no mining going on, there's no cars in and out, there's a fence that blocks this. And essentially, why did we do this? It wasn't to violate the law, it wasn't to thumb our nose at the town. Essentially, what happened was, Red Wing had a number of contractors all lined up, just like some of you may have had things lined up through COVID. And if you canceled it, you probably weren't getting it done for a year or so. And what Red Wing had was a number of steps lined up to build this road. They never expected this to happen, they never expected for me to be here today. And what they expected to do was give the road, give the town a heads up and build the road. So when this all came about, we told Red Wing, do not move forward, we need to look into this, we gotta stay this. And at that point, there And at that point, there really was no turning back for Red Wing. They had already lined up these contractors, they were talking tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars here. And if they didn't do it at that point, it wasn't getting done until 2022. And that's why they moved forward with it. But they did not move forward with the whole thing, and they only did what they had to do, which was necessary, which was just the stones. There is no pavement, there's no cars going in and out of this thing, like I said. And there's certainly, as you've seen the photos, no materials going in and out. Yeah, we can go through this. So that's the entrance of the road, which by the way, already existed. This was already in existence, it's just been expanded. And trees have come out. And there is now, this was a few months ago, but there is a gate there now.
What was the original road going with versus what's there now? What's the extent of the road?
I don't know those figures. It is large. There's trees that were taken down to make it wider, to comply with the town's rules. And it was a smaller road, obviously, to come to the water.
Yeah, I kind of remember, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time. My recollection of being out there a thousand years ago was that it really wasn't much of a road, it was just a couple of, because we went out there, and there were just a couple of tracks.
Right.
And we were taking four-by-fours out there, because it was really not much of a road.
Right. Now, I mean, now it's as much wider, you can put two vehicles on it, let's just put it that way. And you can walk on it now, because they're stone.
There's been a lot of material, hasn't there?
The stone, yep. And the turtle fences, and then the turtle passages, and some of those blue bin type things that are for the animals to grow.
But I mean, all the stone that's been added and traded, it's not existed.
No, it's not. I mean, you can see it from the photos. It's bigger than what it was, but there was a road there before. This isn't something that they just cleared out and crushed right there. It was actually already there, and then they just had to expand it, it was in existence, and put down the stone, like you're saying.
I think it would be interesting if you, if we had a photograph of what was there before versus what's there now.
Right.
It's a big difference.
One of the submissions, and I'll just be clear, one of the submissions that I saw before I took the trip down here has some aerial footage of, I think, what was before. I don't have it, I didn't submit that, but somebody else does that. So the town will be able to see that, the president will be able to see that as well. So just moving on here with our argument is that essentially, 56 and a half acres fall outside the mining overlay zone. So those 56 and a half acres are not tied to the mining overlay or the zoning code, or the mining zoning code. So there is no supplemental use permit, or special use permit for the 56 and a half acres. They fall outside of that. And normally, you wouldn't be able to mine on that acreage, but because the appellate division of New York State has ruled we can mine, we're now able to mine, and we're not subject to the zoning law. And then the road, like I already mentioned, and you saw up there, that goes through that 56 and a half acres. It's almost all encompassed in the 56 and a half acres, which is part of the previous litigation, which is the fourth rule that we had a vested right to mine. Mining activities included mine access road, this was part of that application. And then the 37 and a half acres are also encompassed, not only are they permitted, but they're also encompassed in the 94 acres that the appellate division has ruled we have a vested right to mine. And it's our position that if we have to go through another special use permit, we are just relitigating everything that we did the last seven years. We've already gone through all these issues, we've already addressed the town's concerns, we've already lost at all these stages, but we've won at the stage that mattered, the biggest stage, the appellate division stage. And by having us go through all of these steps again, is just relitigating something that has already been litigated. Now, I think I've addressed most of the comments to the board here of what I've seen, but just to summarize real quick and just make one comment on Mr. Raplansky's submission, which I did not have an opportunity to fully root through. But again, a lot of the comments that I saw did not have to do with the road, they had to do with the mine in general. And while that has already been litigated, there's also a time in the future that I'll be able to talk about that as well, which is the DEC has a permit for this 56 and a half acres that is pending, and there will be town comment on that. And that's where a lot of those comments that have to do with the noises of the trucks or wildlife or what have you will be able to be made at that point. And that's not really why we're here today. We're really here today to talk about the road. And as far as the road goes, I've already made my point obviously clear, which is, you know, that we have a vested right to mine, and it's outside the zoning district, and we don't need a special use permit. But also, just again, we didn't turn our back on the town, we didn't violate the rules, knowing the rules were in place. We believe that we don't need a special use permit. We moved forward with it, it was all stayed, there was no season desist to have that stayed at the time. Now, with respect to Mr. Raplansky's submission, and again, I just got it before I came down here in Albany, Saratoga area. There was a whole lot that I didn't expect in that submission from what I saw, but there was one thing that I most certainly would like to address. And that is, in the town submission, this Raplansky submission, he cites numerous times where Red Wing said, we need a special use permit, well, we need a special use permit, we need a special use permit. And I encourage the zoning board of appeals to look at those comments, and as you'll see, they are all dated before the litigation was decided by the court. So I think there was a comment 2016, there may have been a comment 2013, there may have been a comment 2001. I may be a little slightly off on those years. But the important part, and the important thing about those submissions is that was before we had a ruling that said we had a vested right to mine. We believed that we may still need a special use permit at that time. Now, the whole situation has changed with the appellate division's decision. And to the board, I know I addressed this off the record, but if we could get a great chance to respond to the town's writings, and it sounds like we may have another hearing anyway, if you could have a time to do that, we'd greatly appreciate it.
And that goes for everybody, absolutely. We just received, just for the record, we received a lot of information in the last, I'm not going to say two hours, but you know, say 24 hours or 48 hours, which we haven't been able to sit through. And sure, a lot of people haven't been able to sit through. So absolutely, we'll have an opportunity, we'll extend an opportunity for you to respond to Mr. Raplansky or anybody else.
Okay.
To respond to. It is my intention to keep this meeting open, because there has been so much information before and in the last 24 hours, which we need to get through. So you have the opportunity to respond.
Okay, thank you. And that's all.
And I guess the only thing I'd ask for folks, if you want to respond to what's already been, you know, sent out, and you haven't seen it before, the last 24 or 48 hours, if you could be kind enough to get it to us for maybe a week or so beforehand, so we have an opportunity to digest it before the next meeting. Is a week enough, you think, or?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all we ask.
Okay, great. That's all I can do. Thank you.
All right. So the first person on the sign up sheet is Paula Trimble. Paula, would you like to come on up? And again, the procedure is, please state your name, state where you live, and then I'll provide your comments to the board, please.
Okay, my name is Paula Trimble. I live at 198 Slade Quarry Road, which is also known as County Road 19. Our property runs along the south side of Slade Quarry, starting just west of the intersection of White Schoolhouse and Slade Quarry Road. I'm here to ask you to uphold the ZEO's determination. I'm a member of the Rhinebeck Rural Neighbors Association, concerned with the proposed increased mining along White Schoolhouse and its impacts. I sent in some written remarks, and in my remarks, I included a timeline that I hope will assist the ZEO in its deliberations in the matter of the Red Wing's stop work order. The timeline documents the key things concerning the stop work order, and they're interwoven with observations, quotes, and pictures taken at the time by the rural Rhinebeck neighbors. Based on these observations, Red Wing clearly worked on the road without permits from the town and in spite of being issued a stop work order. They completed almost all the work on the road before completing their application to appear before the ZEO to appeal the order. I'm not going to say anything more about this matter and let you rely on the written testimony. I also call your attention to the written comments provided for the record by Maeve Tour of Tour and Marone LFP in support of the ZEO's determination. I'll close my speaking now with a couple of sentences from her written comments conclusion. The ZEO reasonably and correctly determined that Red Wing's decision to construct an access road without special use permit was a clear violation of the town's zoning code. The ZEO should uphold the ZEO's determination and require Red Wing to obtain a special use permit for the existing DEC permitted mine within the mining overlay district before completing construction on and using any access road to the mine. I completely concur with Ms. Tour's analysis and comments. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And that would be the report, or their correspondence dated August 18, 2021? The Tour and Marone?
Yes. I think it's titled Written Comments.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Michael Trimble.
Michael, tell me my name, I live at 198 Slade Quarry Road, Utah. And I just want to make sure the ZEO appears as a private citizen to, as opposed to the town's capacity. I think, a thing that needs to be understood here is the violation is a special use permit 12468FF, Extractive Operations. And I think that what's been, I think it's misleading, yes, the Court of Appeals said they could mine that property, and that property is a subtle fact at this point in time. But the Court of Appeals did not discuss access to a town road. In the Mine Land Reclamation Law, it states quite clearly, "The purpose stated here in this title shall supersede all other state or local laws relating to extractive mining and discreet, provided however, nothing in this title shall be construed to prevent a local government from A, enacting or enforcing local laws or notices of general applicability, except that such local laws or notices are not regulate mining or reclamation activities regulated by state statute, regulation, or permit." Special use permit 12568FF does not do that. Also, that goes on to say, "Enacting or enforcing local zoning ordinances and laws which determine permissible uses in zoning districts. Where mining is designated as permissible use for any reason in this area, use and a zoning district and allowed by special use permit, conditions placed on such special use permit shall be deemed to be foul. Ingress and egress of other thoroughfares controlled by the local government and as you know, White Schoolhouse Road is a town road. Routing admissible transport vehicles on roads controlled by the local government." That's what they, built the road, which I don't see the picture now, I'm not grassing off, but they can't use White Schoolhouse Road without that special use permit. Yes, they built it. I think there are questions about the legality of that, but they clearly cannot use it.
How's that? Should have been on that first. And it is much to be noted that down in the files down below, we have copies of all the special use permits that have been approved for the different mining operations on Schoolhouse Road, going back at least in the 1980s. I'll just read you one of the conditions. That the fouling conditions of the previously issued permit, special use permit, this company was issued in March 10, 1987, the previous issue, be continued that A, the trucks continue to be limited as previously suggested by the town highway superintendent for a maximum of 10 wheels with a maximum capacity of 12 cubic yards, and that reasonable consideration continually given to the residential neighborhood in monitoring the number of vehicles per day that is specifically provided by the county board, these are highly pre-ordered.
Do they have?
That the county board reserves the right to review this matter further and votes specific restrictions in this regard at any time being necessary by the zoning enforcement office here. This particular special use permit, 12568FF, was issued to Vincent Kinlan on October 4, 1993. And I have a whole list of all of them, okay, if you want to see them, but we have the complete resolutions downstairs if you'd like to see it. The issue here is, what the ZEO did was justify, it was based on the use of the road. And I don't believe that the court decision rescinded the power of the village of the town to control that road. And that's, the trucks of this issue was the control of that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael, I just want to clarify, the control of White Schoolhouse, of White Schoolhouse, yes.
Jordan, did you get that? All right. Elizabeth Barnett?
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Barnett with the Monroe High School, that's the one. My husband and I lived in a property that abuts the Red Wing mine, and are naturally very concerned about the plans for the commercial mining of the property, and how it will affect us as well as our neighborhood and the larger Rhinebeck community. We treasure the tranquil scenic area and hope that we'll remain a place where we can live peacefully. We're members of the Rural Rhinebeck Neighbors Group and organization formed to address issues related to the mine. I understand that the Red Wing mine will go forward despite the best efforts of the town and citizens like us. However, we're very concerned that they're claiming that they're not subject to the laws and regulations of the town. And I understand that there's more to that from today's presentation than I understood. But I think it's really important that the town continue to uphold its position in controlling activities that affect all of us, and in particularly, the use of the road. My understanding is that the town's voting office started issuing the stop work order to prevent the Red Wing from building access road. And my understanding is that this order was not followed, and that, you know, they believe that it doesn't apply to the, but it's really hard for me to understand how they could expect to be exempted from town rules, these kinds of things when the rest of us are all regularly complying with these kinds of regulations. So I think it's, you know, beyond the scope of today's meeting to talk about some of the impact, but we're, you know, especially concerned about, you know, the connection to the road, the use of the road, the amount of traffic that will be on the road, and, you know, how it affects all of us. So appreciate your thoughts on that.
We appreciate you giving your thoughts on it. All right. By the way, if I mispronounce somebody's name, I do the best I can, but I'm not very good at it. So is it Phil Nieves?
Perfect.
Wow.
You passed your high school Spanish test.
Well, actually, I passed the bar exam, but that doesn't mean anything.
Believe me. Believe me. My name is Bill Nieves, and I live on Cedar Lane. My confidence is not restored after Red Wing's presentation. Scott, you're right to ask a question about the road, how do you remember it? That's how I remember it too. It was roughly about the size of the suburban driveway. If you look at it now, it's about as wide as a jet runway. My wife and I have lived in Rhinebeck for over two decades. Like most of you, we fell in love with this land, steeped in history, a land blessed by beauty and bounty. It is our forever home. Red Wing is not our neighbor. Red Wing does not live in Rhinebeck. Red Wing is in Rhinebeck not only to crush rock and stone, but less unabated, they're also here to crush and diminish our whole reason for living here. We live a stone's throw from Red Wing. We live within breathing distance of Red Wing. Where will all that crushed rock dust go? It's like a thong dark talcum powder that covers every surface. It's in the air we breathe. And Red Wing wants to increase mining operations. Why should Red Wing care? They don't live here, but you do. Do you care? Do you breathe? Because that dust won't just settle around White Schoolhouse Road. As Bob Dylan sang, you don't need a weatherman to know which way the wind blows. And if Red Wing gets its way, that ill wind... And if Red Wing gets its way, that ill wind will blow towards you, Rhinebeck, towards you, Red Hook, towards you, Statsburg, Myling, Clinton. If Red Wing flaunts the rules and regulations, if they frown their noses at the board, if they get away with their flagrant disregard for the land and the people who live on it, where does that leave us? If Red Wing alights on White Schoolhouse Road, it won't be with the soft flutter of butterfly wings, but with the thunderous roar of multi-ton dump trucks, and our forever dream home will become a breathless forever nightmare. Thank you.
Just a reminder, if anybody does have written comments they'd like to submit, they can submit them to Chris or submit them, like Scott said, we will be probably extending it.
Well, we'll definitely be extending it because people here are giving the opportunity to respond to written information that was just provided, so we're definitely going to keep it open. So yeah, whatever you want to submit, please submit to Chris. And again, I understand, there are a lot of strong feelings and that's great, so just, just a reminder to, I'm not saying you shouldn't be emotional, but just, let's just try to keep it as calm as possible. And again, no ad hominem attacks, it hasn't happened yet, thank God, everybody's been great, but let's just keep it up. All right, Mr. Carl, is it Duncan Burke?
Burton.
Ah.
Hi, everyone, Carl Duncan Burke, 15 Ballenbecker Road, Rhinebeck. I had a lot of things to say, but it sounds like we're going to get another crack at this, so I'm just going to have two quick things. One, although I believe a couple of you already sort of addressed it, the characterization of this roadwork over the last couple of months as being a minor expansion of an existing access road is really laughable. I mean, we're talking about going from an overgrown, at best, mountain bike path to a thoroughfare at this point. I'd love to know how many tons of fill were used to make this project happen over the couple of weeks. It seemed to go in overnight, but it was major. The other thing that Red Wing's attorney raised was, I hope I don't mischaracterize it, but was a question of what the purpose would be of re-adjudicating the special use permit, another special use permit application before the planning board, because that's what's at issue here today. And I think the better question is what situation we'd be putting ourselves in if the stop work order is not upheld by the ZBA. It seems, from what I understand, and if any of the board members want to correct me, that that would basically mean no special use permit application, therefore no appearances before the planning board. And that would mean that neither the planning board nor the town, near as I can tell, would have any oversight on this massive access road that's going in, the curb cut, also massive, onto White Schoolhouse Road. A curb cut is something that every single family house owner needs to get in order to build an eight-foot gravel driveway. So we're talking about the access road and how it has been constructed, the curb cut, and then probably most importantly, the thought of not having oversight of any kind of feedback from the town about truck traffic, weight limits, how they're going to handle a bridge that is at least a foot too narrow for the UPS truck and one of the dump trucks to pass each other at the moment. I just think they're very serious issues to work out before the planning board, and that is the reason that people in Red Wing's position are required to apply for a special use permit. I also would like to say that I agree with all of the points in Maeve Tour's letter that was submitted this month, so, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. And I'll blame this on Hemmerich, just in case I get it wrong. Ryan, is it?
Keeler?
No, that was me.
Well, that was you. Keller?
Keller.
Lawyers always have right-hand writing. Sarah Bowen. Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. My name is Sarah Bowen. I am here tonight with my husband, Sean Bowen. We live at 219 Slay Creek Road. We live exactly at the intersection of White Schoolhouse and Slay Creek Road. We live at the deadliest intersection, I suppose, in all of this area. We have had someone dying in our driveway. We ask the ZBA to please uphold the ZBO's determination regarding Red Wing. As people living within and paying taxes in Rhinebeck, we were asked to apply for permits and variances and appear before this board for a number of different times. We asked to install a fence on our property so that people could actually see that we live at this intersection and stop driving through our front yard. So we went through the process of this.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Is that the white, big white fence?
That big white fence.
Okay, I remember that one.
That's us, yes. So we, so we did that to help the intersection so that people could see. We came here again to install a garage and install a shed, and we've been through this process a number of times and appreciate why this process is important. So we're confused when people don't have to go through the same process. We expect that all people and businesses in our neighborhood are held to the same standard, doing the right processes we were, and that they do not start projects unless they are explicitly eligible to do so. We support and agree with the public comment letter that Maeve Tour of Tour and Marone LLP submitted. And furthermore, Sean and I would like to invite any or all of you, or anyone in the government of Rhinebeck, to please come to our home and sit in our driveway to assess the problems of having increased traffic, turning a dangerous left-hand turn with limited site distance, with speeding vehicles coming down track. When I hear a tractor trailer, my heart goes bum-bum-bum, we don't even have time for regular trucks to turn left at this intersection. I would like you to come, preferably when it's raining, so that you can see the numerous near misses, the people that pass our house and crash into the rock next to me, the cars that often flip onto their roofs or smash into trees. There have been multiple deaths based on these car accidents. This already deadly intersection causes incredible danger, not only to the people living here, but also to the many residents of Rhinebeck who traverse past this intersection, as well as tourists, visitors, and the men who are, and women, and people of any gender who are driving these trucks as well. I'm concerned about the safety of everyone involved in this situation. I think this goes beyond just the road, as we know, there are, there are multiple times to talk about this, but I just wanted to go on record and say, please come to my home, please sit in our driveway, don't just assess where this mining road attaches to White Schoolhouse, please come see how the trucks turn in as part of your installation.
Thank you. Okay, if you could give that to Chris, we'll make that part of our record.
Thank you.
That's me.
Oh, that was you. I'm sorry. I'm so glad I wanted to hear it again. Is it Cornelia Gallo?
Hi, I'm Cornelia Gallo, can you hear me? And I'm at 348 Asher Road. I grew up on 308. I spent many hours, many times driving White Schoolhouse Road, and still do. I'm going to follow up on Michael's comments and Sarah's comments about the special use permit dealing with the traffic on White Schoolhouse Road. They're saying 25 trucks a day, that's twice a day, based on an eight-hour day that is a ton every 9.6 minutes. And Sarah, I don't need to sit on your drive because I'm tired by your drive. It is atrocious. You cannot pass two cars off the corners of pedestrian. The town needs to remember this is a rural community, and we need to focus on that and keep it rural and keep our citizens safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Warren Laplansky, I'm the attorney to the town of Rhinebeck, and appearing before the board tonight on behalf of the town board in opposition to the appeal of Red Wing Properties, appealing from the notice of violation that was served upon them on April 27, 2021. The notice of violation was sent to Red Wing as a result of their commencement of construction of a mine access road and excavation of approximately 217,000 square feet of property without special permit and site plan approval from the planning. Red Wing's failure to apply for and obtain a special use permit and site plan approval for the excavation activities, and their failure to obtain, apply for special permits for continuing mining activities. Now, Red Wing has appealed this notice of violation to the zoning board of appeals and the gravity of their argument, and what caught the town board's attention, is Red Wing's argument that Red Wing, as a result of the appellate division decision in Red Wing Properties versus Town Rhinebeck, has a vested right to mine 94 acres as a prior non-conforming use. And as a result, Red Wing is exempt from permitting requirements of the town code, which is set forth in 12568 FF of our code, and also 12568 NA of our code. These are two sections, one applies to actual gravel mining, the other applies to excavation, which also applies to the conduct of taking soil from that property. The board is fully familiar with the facts and circumstances of this case from the prior appeal, so I won't, I won't go over that, although I included some of that in my letter. The NOB was served upon Red Wing by his own enforcement officer after learning that Red Wing had in fact begun construction of the access road without obtaining any special permits, and as a result, reports that there were large-scale excavation equipment on the property, which obviously was used to build the Sidovis Road. In 2015, the town of Rhinebeck amended its code to limit the boundaries of the mining over the lake district to only those lands upon which there were existing DEC permitting operations in 2009. As we know, Red Wing filed an appeal of that case to the zoning board of appeals, and arguing that it had a prior non-conforming right to mine the entire 214 acres, whatever they owned, because they had manifested an intent to mine the entire property. Not that they hadn't obtained any permits or mined the property, but they had manifested an intent to mine the entire property. And this board, after hearing extensive testimony and proof, determined that Red Wing had not established its right to a non-conforming use based upon the manifestation of intent. It's true that because of the unique nature of mining activities, they do enjoy, mines do enjoy special status under the law in that the mines are mined gradually over a period of years, and as a result, the courts have allowed them special exemption to the normal non-conforming use status where they can manifest an intent to mine the entire properties, even though a very small portion of their mines have been mined. And that's what Red Wing had argued before the ZBA. The ZBA did not buy that, ruled against them. They also argued that in an appeal to the Supreme Court, Dutchess County, and the Supreme Court did not buy that. Unfortunately, the case was taken to the appellate division's second department, and the appellate division did rule in Red Wing's favor, but only to the extent of modifying the existing order to provide that a petitioner had established a vested right to mine the 94 acres of its property as a prior mining non-conforming use. The appellate division did not declare the amendments of the town's mining overlay district unconstitutional, it did not strike it down, and the appellate division did not determine that the town had engaged in the taking of Red Wing's property, as argued by Red Wing. Now, Red Wing argues that the determination of the appellate division somehow exempts them from making an application to the, to the town planning board for a special use permit to mine their property. However, there's nothing, nothing in the appellate division decision which states that. There is nothing in the appellate division decision which states that Red Wing is exempt from the permitting authority of the town. It only, in essence, and in substance, stated that Red Wing has provided the requisite manifestation of intent so that it can apply to the town for the special use permit and to DEC for the special use permit. That's all it did. It's well-accepted law in the state of New York that zoning codes are not supposed to be interpreted in a manner which receives an absurd or an unintended consequence. One would be hard pressed to find a more absurd situation than where a non-conforming mine, which only is granted the non-conforming status because of its manifestation to, in the future, mine that property, is exempt from the same permitting requirement, permanent requirements as somebody else who owns the property and has not mined it at all. If Mr. Burton owned that property and had not done any mining on the property, he would have to go through the permitting process. Red Wing has to go through the same permitting process. Courts simply stated, I reemphasize, that Red Wing had the right to apply for a special use permit to the town. Non-conforming uses, such as Red Wing's, are not favored by the law. The municipalities have the power to regulate, and I've cited a number of cases in which the courts have upheld the municipality's power to regulate non-conforming uses. Indeed, the municipalities have the right to zone out and advertise out non-conforming uses. They're not favored uses under the law. Why in the world would Red Wing, as a non-favored, non-conforming use, be exempt from the same permitting requirements as any other property owner in the town? It's nonsensical, and that's not the way we asked the ZBA to interpret our code. There's numerous cases in the state of New York, let's hold, that even non-conforming uses, even if you have a protected non-conforming use, the municipality has a right to regulate that use under its code. And I cited at least one case in my papers, there's numerous other cases to that effect. And the town has done that, actually, in section 125101 of its code, and if you bear with me for a moment, I'll read it. It says, "Any use, structure, or building lawfully established prior to the enactment of the zoning law or its predecessor, which is not prohibited by the provisions of this chapter, but which requires the issuance of a special use permit or site plan approval, shall be deemed to be a lawful non-conforming use pursuant to this chapter." We acknowledge that, that's in the law. However, in the event of such non-conforming use, building or structure is proposed to be enlarged or expanded, as in the case of Red Wing, or any site improvements are added to the site on which the non-conforming use building or structure is operated or maintained, special use permit approval in accordance with the special permit requirements of that use and site plan approval shall be required for such expansion, enlargements, and or additions. The town has anticipated that there might be a situation where you have a prior non-conforming use, but the town has indicated that when you're expanding use, but the town has indicated that when you're expanding that non-conforming use, such as the expansion from a 34-acre mine to a 94-acre mine or a 250-acre mine, you have to come in and get a special permit. So the town has recognized that it controls the non-conforming use of Red Wing and all other non-conforming uses. And no, one need not look no further than the statements that were made by Red Wing to the court below and to our zoning enforcement officer, where they acknowledged this fact. And I am reading from a letter that Red Wing sent to the zoning enforcement officer at the incipient stages of this litigation, which prompted all of this litigation and was before the appellate division when they made their decision. And this, I'm quoting from Red Wing, finally, it bears emphasis that a determination that Red Wing has a vested right to mine additional portions of its property does not mean that Red Wing is immune from reasonable regulations by the town, subject, of course, to the limits imposed by the mine reclamation law. Indeed, prior to actually mining additional portions of the property, Red Wing will need to apply for and obtain a special use permit from the planning board. Such a permit can include reasonable conditions to the extent such conditions were consistent with the mine reclamation law. And the town does have jurisdiction over the gravel mine. Not completely, the D E C has preempted a large portion of the town's jurisdiction, but still has a substantial right to control traffic, access, and certain mining activities on that property. And this is Red Wing's own statement to the zoning enforcement officer, which was before the appellate division when they made that decision. In addition, Red Wing, through the affidavit of Paul H. Briggs, the president and principal geologist of Briggs Land Consultants, Geologists, Geologists, Inc., made a similar acknowledgement in his affidavit in the court below, where he said, "The Z B A decision cites the testimony of Warren Plansky, the town board attorney, that no excavation has been conducted on the property outside the 37.5 acre life of mine approved by D E C, nor has any infrastructure, hall roads, clearing of trees, and states that Z B A has confirmed this true during cycles." And he goes on to state, "Of course, this is true. Red Wing cannot legally engage in any mining activities in areas other than the existing life of the mine until it receives a permit to do so." Mr. Briggs, on behalf of Red Wing, admitted that to the court below when they made their decision. Then there's the affidavit of Mr. Doherty, vice president of Red Wing, dated December 7, 2001, where he says, "The town will have, the town will have both regulatory jurisdiction for the expansion under the special use permit requirements, as well as a critical role in more subjective support opposition for the expansion that will play a significant role in the secret proceeding." These are all coming from the applicant. And they were before the court. Sorry.
Continue.
And they were before the court, when the court made its decision. These are not ancient declarations. And there's a concept, and I didn't put this in my brief, but I want to give it to you now, it's called judicial estoppel. And the concept of judicial estoppel includes a party from taking an position in one legal proceeding, which is contrary to that which he or she took in a prior proceeding, simply because his or her interests have changed. And this is the appellate division second department, case of matter versus Edison versus Shawhold, Shawhold Zoning Board of Appeals, 10283687. And I ask that you and your counsel take a look at that case, because I think these statements, standing alone from a sedarity, which were made in conjunction with court proceedings, preclude them from taking an opposite position now and will preclude them from taking an opposite position if this case goes back to court, which unfortunately seems like it might. And finally, I'd just like to note that regardless of whether there is merit to Red Wing's argument that because the 37.5 acres is now outside the mining overlay district, somehow they magically become exempt from any permitting authority from the town, one of the most ludicrous arguments I've ever heard, it should be noted that 37.5 acres of that mine, which has not been completely mined out, for which they're seeking approvals both from D E C and from, should be seeking from the town, are within the mining overlay district, even the reduced mining overlay district. And the road isn't pertinent to that. And that has been held to be true by the case of Partition Street Corp. versus Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Rensselaer, 3028265, which I've cited in my brief. In addition to the road being pertinent to the 37 acres, the rest of the acreage is also pertinent to the 37 acres. So by virtue of the fact that even if you accept the absurd arguments of Red Wing, that they're not, not within the mining overlay district and we have no jurisdiction over it, conceivably, the 37.5 acres is within the mining district, the road is in the mining district as an pertinent, and the 50 additional acres are also within the mining district as pertinent to the 37.5 acre. So if you take even that position, which is the best-case scenario for Red Wing, they have to come to the town board and get approval for their mine. There's no other conclusion that I think you reasonably could have. And we're not asking them to do the impossible. We're asking to do not years of permitting authority, we're asking them to do what they recognize they have to do in the past, in which they did do on the 37 acres, until there was an issue over the gravel mine. It's not an insurmountable task. It's reasonable, the planning board will review their application and make a decision as to whether they should get a permit. We're not looking, by virtue of the fact that they have to go before the planning board to stop the mining, although we're not in favor of the mine, we're looking for them to go to the planning board and get necessary approvals and have the planning board have oversight over the road, the access road, the noise, the truck traffic, and all the other attendant aspects of the mine, for which unquestionably the planning board has authority. So we hope that your ruling is in our favor on this. I would like an opportunity to respond to Red Wing's response to mine as a sur reply. So if we could work something out where I have additional time to respond to their comments, I would appreciate that. And I thank you for your presence.
And if you could just make that part of the record, the additional, yeah, what you cited there? Or just provide, you can provide, give me the case? Yeah, the case, just.
Yeah, I think I saw it.
All right, well, it didn't mean it to me.
I'm only, I'll email it here. And one other point, I did read the, we got to the same thing, and I read the memo from the law firm, Tore and Barone. I completely agree with their analysis, and I agree with, Michael Trimble and I don't know who's agreeing on everything. But I firmly believe, agree with the statements that he made tonight. So we're in support of those statements also.
Thank you. And Mr. Luke Sullivan?
I have no comments to add to this.
Okay. And I appreciate that. That's another thing we ask, is that there not be any redundancy and all that kind of stuff. Not that we want to preclude you from saying anything, but, you know, if the attorney has said that's fantastic, so thank you. There's nobody else left on this list, but since we are all here, is there anyone else who would like to come up and make a comment? If so, do now. And applicant, if you want to address any of the arguments that have been made, you have that opportunity now, or I will tell you right now, we are going to keep this meeting open, so if you'd like, you can address the arguments at the next meeting too. So I leave it to you folks. If anyone else wants to speak?
From a timing standpoint, can we ask, you, Mr.?
Tyler.
Yes. If he could respond with his response to Warren, in time with Warren, what can I respond in the next meeting, or?
Well, absolutely.
Put a timeline on it.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying, you made your arguments, Warren, it's almost like a briefing schedule, basically. So you oppose him, you want to do a reply, and then you want to do a sur reply? Is that what I'm getting at?
I guess we would call that a sur reply.
Actually, is a sur reply really countless? To a C P L?
That would be a, yeah, that would be a sur reply.
All right. I tell you what, just everybody, get whatever comments you're going to make to us within a week of the next meeting. Is that fair? Because I'm not going to aim to the sur reply thing, because I mean there's no such thing as a sur reply.
Yes, especially since the public hearing will be open.
Right.
To address them.
Come on up.
Really, the applicant should be the one to make it.
Just procedurally, I would just ask, if Mayor Tore would have the same opportunity to respond?
Absolutely. Anybody, anybody here, not here, watching from home, whatever, if you want to respond to what you have heard tonight, please, you know, get the information in written form within a week of the next meeting. And we'll also give the opportunity to speak again, the same way we're doing it tonight. And I really, I honestly want to say thank you very much. I know this is a very hotly contested situation, very good arguments on both sides, and very strong feelings on both sides, but everybody made their arguments passionately but courteously. And I really appreciate that. And I'm sure that'll happen at our next meeting, which is?
9:15.
9:15. So we'll see you in a month. Have a good day today.
Is that considered or is that?
Not yet.
Is that not?
Keep it going. Yes, he's just got to adjourn and we should be good.
Is it helpful? No, no. This is, this is. Come down.
Other than I can't hear a piece.
And then, this is the one that we should do. July 21st.
So it's too close meeting.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want that. Sure.
This year the phone, I can just, I can just hear them.
Yeah, yeah.
We unfortunately don't have.
Well, focus where we are. It's like.
We're one notch.
And it's, I love it. Every day.
I would like to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's clear.
Yeah, someone's working on it. Make that happen.
Right. And Jordan? Just need to make a quick statement.
I'm still rolling.
Still rolling?
Yeah, I'm still rolling.
But before we adjourn, which we're about to do, I just wanted to state for the record that I spoke to both counsel for the applicant as well as counsel for the town.
For the members of the, we're still, we're still in the middle of the meeting. If you would mind us for.
Ready? Okay. I just want to state for the record that prior to the meeting commencing, I spoke to both counsel for the applicant as well as counsel for the town. And because we did not technically have a forum to make the motion to keep this public hearing open, they graciously consented to doing so. And part of that purpose was so that both of them would have the opportunity to respond to their, to each other's arguments. So everybody agreed.
And we also didn't have a motion to close the public hearing pattern.
Right.
So how do you know?
Yeah, and that is correct as well. So the bottom line is everybody agreed to keep the public hearing open so that everybody would have the opportunity to review everybody else's arguments, submit whatever they wanted to submit, and it was really a consent by all of the parties.
And it was also made several points several times that any written comments can be submitted about a week before the next meeting so that everyone has a chance to review it and then prepare comments.
Right.
In response, or any additional comments at the next meeting on September 15th.
And with that, a motion?
So Tim Allenbrook has joined back to the table.
So we now have a forum, and we can leave, otherwise we'd have to stay all night.
That's right. Good thinking question.
That's right. I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.